All right, if the room would come to order, I would like to call this meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners to order. And just quickly, briefly, before I ask Mr. Walton to come up, I want to say, obviously, I'm Kenny Kidd, the Vice Chairman, and our chairman is absent, he's not with us tonight, and I don't want to share too much information out of respect for him, but I think it's okay to say that our chairman had a little bit of a fall working out this morning, which he does all the time, every day. And so, but had a little bit of a spill, spent a little bit of time in the emergency room. And so, he's recovering from some injuries that are not life-threatening, so he's okay. He was in good spirits, maybe it was the drugs when I spoke to him earlier. But certainly, as you come forward, Mr. Walton, I certainly appreciate you considering our chairman, Mr. Frye, and your prayers, along with the rest of us. And if, without anything else, I will just move to ask Mr. Walton to come join us in the prayer and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for another beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for this opportunity to gather and fellowship, Lord. I pray for the citizens' day, Lord. I pray that, thank you, thank you for the opportunity for them to come before the commissioners to share their ideas, their concerns. For the county, Lord, I pray that you just give them the words to speak. I pray for the commissioners' night, Lord. I pray for them. I pray that you help them to make the decisions that are good decision, good sound decisions for each department that's here, all the citizens that are here, Lord. I pray that you just touch them and just give them the words and the decisions to speak, Lord. And I do lift up Commissioner Frye right now, Lord. I just pray for him. I pray that you just help him to stay focused on you, Lord. I pray that he just looks to you, and I pray that you just touch his body in a way that only you can, Lord. And I pray that you just give him peace in his heart, Lord, and give his family strength in these times, Lord. And thank you, once again, thank you for this time here at the commissioners' meeting, and I pray that you lead it, Lord, and we'll give you all the praise and all the glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. And before we move into our public comment period, we have a special recognition. And I probably will not do as good a job of this as our usual chairperson, so please forgive me. But I had a, and I don't know, if you probably don't want to stand the whole time, I don't know if you want to or not, but is Ms. Betty LaGrange with us this mo, this evening? Ms. Betty, do you mind, is it okay if you stand up for a second? So, everyone, we're gonna get a chance. So, this is the part of our meeting when, from time to time, we have the honor of honoring a centenarian, someone who's reached 100 years old, or sometimes a little older than that, in some cases. But anyway, I just wanted to recognize her, and some of her family members had sent some things. So, anyway, Ms. Betty was born in 1925, obviously, they get us to about right here. So, but she's had a lot of different experiences in her life, and she's from New York State. She graduated from Bern Knox High School, did I pronounce that right? So, anyway, so anyway, in 1943, married, and eventually moved to North Carolina, obviously, and so she's here with us now. And so, Ms. Betty lives at a Crossroads Retirement Community by herself, and she probably drove herself here tonight, from what I understand. She drives everywhere. And so, and she's still pretty active. I feel like I'm probably not in as good a shape as Ms. Betty is. So, but, so she's had a lot of different children, grandchildren, everything, but I was just kind of reading through the notes about her, and kind of a couple of things I wanted to share that I just pointed out to myself. She lives, like I said, at Crossroads Retirement, Independent Living Apartment there, by herself. When she stays busy with crafts and writing poems and taking care of others, she sets aside a lot of time to worship her Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. She practices her daily devotions every morning at her kitchen table and attends worship service on Sunday mornings and Wednesday. She loves the Lord and continues to pray for our nation and for her church, which is First Baptist, right downtown here in Ashboro. She has two children, 13 grandchildren, 14 great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. So, that's an accomplishment right there. Anyway, a lot of her hobbies and passions are, she makes, which I'd like to see this, I'm gonna have to visit her sometime and see this, she makes butterflies from discarded calendars and shares those with people all over the community and around, so, and apparently, they're not too hard to find. So, I think they're kind of around everywhere. But anyway, I just wanted to recognize her, and we have a certificate from the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, which is to Ms. Betty LaGrange, and do you mind coming up and receiving this? Somebody can come with you, if that'd be okay? So, this is in honor of your 100th birthday on October the 11th, and we recognize and honor you from the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. And we want, this is our sincere congratulations, and we're looking forward to another happy and healthy 100 years.
Congratulations.
So, I get one. How about that?
Is there someone missing here?
No, there's just no one sitting here tonight. Thank you.
Well, but our chairman is not here. Ms. Betty? Would you like for us to be sure our chairman gets one? He's the one who's not here tonight. We'll make sure he gets it. He would be disappointed not to. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, you're, thank you. Thank you for coming.
What a great example and a witness. Here we are trying to share and give her something, and her first instinct is to give us something. So, anyway, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for being such a good example for 100 years. So, all right, I will, we'll continue now with our meeting with the public comment period, and Mr. Morgan, will you read our rules?
Mr. Vice Chair, the rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the, will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Jonathan Burris.
My name is Jonathan Burris. I'm a pastor teacher at Sophia Baptist Church. And before you two address the shocking letter from Randolph County Library Director Ross Holt regarding the book Call Me Max in the children's room. Holt describes Call Me Max as appropriately selected for the children's collection. This, along with Ms. Martin's choice to place it in the children's room, causes me to question their judgment. Further, Holt's attempt to justify the book's inclusion by noting its presence in the Chatham County Library and recommendations of the SLJ, which often categorizes books into categories such as diversity, equity, and inclusion, was nothing short of confirmation bias that failed to disclose the controversy that we see in states like Texas and Utah, where a third-grade read aloud was canceled because this book was deemed inappropriate to be read to eight- and nine-year-olds. So, why write a book on sexual identity targeting five-to-seven-year-olds? Psychologist Lawrence Kohlberg says that by five to six, most children achieve gender constancy. They recognize the categories of boy things and girl things. Sociologist Charles Cooley wrote that children form a looking-glass self and develop identity based on the world they are introduced to. Psychoanalyst Eric Erickson said that children at this age form group-oriented identities, which, if neglected, results in a lifelong inferiority in children who do not feel as if they are a part of any group or any family or class. Psychologists identify introducing adult themes to children prematurely as a red flag for predatory or sexual grooming. Grooming is recognized as a child sexual abuse tactic in laws like the 2006 Adam Walsh Child Protection Act. So, why did Lukoff write Call Me Max? The author's stated intent was to create an age-appropriate introduction to transgender identity for young children written to normalize everyday experiences. Lukoff is a transgender author and former librarian, whose defined mission is to advance transgender visibility through youth literature while challenging societal discomfort. All of this is on the author's website at kylelukoff.com. This is not free speech. This is grooming. In America, the citizens are the sovereigns. You, as commissioners, represent the people. Civil magistrates in the Old Testament are even called Elohim or gods because they serve as human representatives of God's righteousness and His justice. Therefore, we call on you, as overseers of that board, to ensure that Call Me Max and all material like it are promptly removed from the children's room to an adult section, and that those employees who believe that this book and others like it are suitable for children the ages of five-to-seven-year-olds be properly trained on methods and dangers of grooming children. We'll see you on Thursday, and we will be watching. Our prayers are with Chairman Frye. Thank you for your time.
Stephen Abarno.
My name is Stephen Abarno. I'm here on the matter of the 1993 firearms discharge in the county, and I lived down there on the dead-end side of Zoo Parkway, where it's been nice and quiet for four years, and then all of a sudden, some new neighbor moved in and started shooting, which is about 200 feet from my, laterally, from their property. And according to the ordinance, it says that nothing can be done, and the sheriff says he can't do nothing because you guys are allowing it to happen. But gun safety is not gun control. My, my safety shouldn't be getting hit by a bullet from a neighbor, especially since I served in the Marine Corps and never had a problem that way. I don't want to get shot by anybody as a civilian from that perspective. So, I was here to see what can be changed as far as in a community area where the distance is so close. I mean, there's obviously gun ranges here that people can go to, or people with large properties can shoot on them properties, it's fine. Is there anything that can be done?
Sir, this is just a public comment period. We, we listen to, we listen to.
And no response?
Well, it's, it's not a, it's not a back-and-forth. It's just, we, we listen to the public comment period.
Okay, well, that's what I gotta say for now, then.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Abanero.
Lori Hunt.
My name is Lori Hunt. Good afternoon, and I stand before you today as the mother and advocate. My son, Zachary Holly, was only 13 years old when he died by suicide after enduring relentless bullying. His life was full of love, light, and potential, and it was cut tragically short. I share his story not to bring sorrow, but to inspire change. Suicide is now the second-leading cause of death among children ages 10 through 14. That fact alone should stop us in our tracks. Behind every number is a child like Zach, a child with dreams, a family, a future that matters. We cannot continue to look the other way and hope that things will improve on their own. In the United States, about one in five students between the ages of 12 and 18 will experience bullying during the school year. These numbers represent real facts, real kids facing daily challenges that affect mental health, self-esteem, and a sense of safety. The impact of bullying can be devastating, and as we've learned all too tragically, it can have deadly consequences. Schools are where our children spend most of their time. They are places meant to nurture, teach, and protect. Yet, far too often, the mental health needs of students are overlooked. Bullying, isolation, and pressure can weigh heavily on young minds. Without proper support, the pain can be unbearable. That is why mental health education must be an essential part of our schools. We teach math, science, history, yet many children are never taught how to cope with stress, how to seek help, or how to show compassion to others. If we can give children the tools to understand their emotions, to build resilience, and to speak up when they or their friends are hurting, we can save lives. We must create a culture where kindness is expected and bullying is not tolerated. Reaching out for help is seen as a sign of strength and not weakness. By investing in mental health programs and suicide prevention efforts in our schools, we honor the memory of children like Zach and give hope to those still struggling. Zach's story is not just mine to tell. It is a call to action for all of us. Together, we can ensure that no other family must endure this kind of loss. We need to build schools where every child feels seen, valued, and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Rita Honeycutt.
Good afternoon. I am here in support of Lori. Trauma brought us together, but something positive came of that, and I have a new friend, and she inspired me to do something, and we started the Suicide Prevention Summit, and I've gotten the chance to spoke with Mr. Allen and Ms. Haywood about what we can do within the community. So, between Thrive Fitness, Veteran Bridge Homes, the Randolph County Emergency Services, Randolph County Veteran Services, we've been putting together mental health first aid and QPR classes. We're working on getting assist classes, and those are open to every single county resident, free of charge. We're gonna feed you lunch and do the training so that you know to recognize the signs and symptoms. We're working with Pam over at Juvenile Day Reporting to try and get youth mental health first aid out there and teen mental health first aid. So, her tragedy is terrible, but because of it, a new program has been inspired in the community. We're trying to bring NAMI back to the community, and we know that we hadn't had it in the past, but it's a wonderful program, and I just want to keep getting the word out there. As long as we're kind to each other and we learn to just recognize these small signs and symptoms, we can help each other. Randolph County this year has lost nine veterans. That means we're losing one a month right now. We also have to take into consideration that our 65 and older population is on the rise for suicide, and I want to support them as much as my veterans. But I really want to make sure our kids are getting the support they need because when we support the youth, they grow up to be successful and important members of our community. I know Hope you were a teacher, so this is close and near and dear to your heart, and I just want to keep building on that. So, I invite all of you, October 25th, we're gonna have another mental health first aid class at the EOC, and every county resident is welcome to come. Registration is open for that. You can find it on the Thrive RC Veterans Facebook page. But remember, it's free to be kind to each other and to give that support to the community. Thank you.
Ma'am, what was the program you said that we, you, I didn't pick it up?
Which one?
You said we had, maybe trying to, trying to bring it back or something?
NAMI. So, I cannot remember the exact words of the acronym. Thank you.
Say that again?
National Alliance for Mental Illness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isaac Hoffman.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Isaac Hoffman, but I believe y'all know that by now. I'm here to tell you why we believe we cannot file a nuisance claim against a task gun range due to their noise, as you have recommended that we pursue. North Carolina State Statute 14-409.46, Sports Shooting Range Protection. A person who owns, operates, or uses a sports shooting range is not subject to an action for nuisance on the basis of noise or noise pollution. And a state court shall not enjoin in the use or operation of a range on the basis of noise or noise pollution if the range is in compliance with any noise control laws or ordinance that apply to the range and its operation at the time the range began operation. When the shooting range was first built in 2001, there was less than 100 members and four open shooting lanes. Now, there are over 600 members and five shooting lanes with shelters from the sun and rain. Since the sheriff's department's position on the current noise at the gun range is that, without revision to the UDO, the noise ordinance or guidance from this board, that the shooting range is currently in compliance with the current noise ordinance, and we, the affected residents, have no legal case against the property owner or the club. This board alone has the power to correct this situation. Please, we need your help on this. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Amy Wang.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Amy Wang. I'm here this evening to talk to you again about the Fuller Mill Road Gun Range. At last month's meeting, Mr. Kidd stated that he would not support any regulation of the gun range. One of his reasons, as I understand it, is that he wanted to avoid any unintended consequences. It is also our understanding that the board in general is very reluctant to place any restrictions on gun use in the county. As it turns out, the situation we are in now was a result of unintended consequences when task decided to build a gun range in an RA-zoned area using a loophole of it being a nonprofit club. Even Mr. Dale, a former planning director, said exactly this at the 2020 meeting. The reduction in property taxes near the range would also likely be an unintended consequence as we doubt that the county actually intended to lose revenue. With that in mind, I would like to remind the board that their decision to adopt the changes to the UDO in 2021 created what we can assume is an unintended consequence, a situation where it is nearly impossible for any new gun ranges to be constructed in Randolph County. The adopted UDO restricts new gun ranges to heavy industrial zoned property. As it turns out, there are currently only 212.73 acres of heavy industrial zoned property in the entire county. That is a smaller area than the single property that the task gun range is currently located on. In fact, not a single existing gun range that we can find is currently located on heavy industrial zoned property. In addition, the cost of an acre of heavy industrial zoned property, if you can find any for sale, is many times more expensive than that of RA-zoned property. The scarcity of HI-zoned property, along with the extremely high cost, presents a huge deterrent for anyone who wants to open a new gun range. Did any of you see that coming when that was passed? Additionally, it is our understanding that with regards to non-conforming land uses that have been grandfathered in after any change to the UDO, it is the county's desire to encourage those land uses to stop or be altered to bring them into compliance with the new rules. Those folks who would want to make their existing shooting ranges conform to the current UDO would find it nearly impossible because they would have to purchase HI-zoned property. Also, people who currently operate gun ranges in the county can no longer improve or enlarge their ranges because they are now non-conforming. We don't know if this was your intention, but the current UDO, which this board approved in 2021, effectively puts a complete block on improving, enlarging, or adding new shooting ranges in Randolph County. Thank you.
Fritz Wang.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Fritz Wang. I'm here to, this evening, to talk about the gun range on Fuller Mill Road. My wife just pointed out how the current UDO prevents anyone from opening a new range in Randolph County without a huge upfront investment. It also makes all of the existing shooting ranges in the county non-conforming uses, which prevents them from making any major improvements, changes, or expanding. The current UDO also technically prevents any private individual from having their own shooting range on their own land, unless it is HI-zoned property. Well, we are here to help. Mrs. Crisco passed out a copy of our proposed changes to the UDO for each of you, which you can read through at your leisure. We have come up with the proposed changes to the UDO that would make it easier for new gun ranges to be built in the county and for existing ranges to become conforming uses, allowing them to improve, to expand, and to become conforming uses. And most importantly, to become good neighbors. It would also exempt private property owners who want to set up a private shooting range on their own land. This revision to the UDO would allow gun ranges to be located on HI, HC, LI, and RA-zone properties. Locating in HC, LI, and RA-zone properties would be subject to noise limits at the property lines. This would, of course, come with an expense, but far, far less than having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just to purchase heavy industrial land. It would allow for expansion and upgrades to current gun ranges as well. Of course, they would need to come into compliance with the new regulations, but they would not need to relocate to HI-zone property. Today marks a point, we've come here over 12 months, so a happy anniversary is in order. Let's use this occasion to turn the corner. Please, look over our proposed changes, and let's find a way together to make this part of the UDO, strike a good balance between residents and shooting enthusiasts, and create a model for the rest of North Carolina to follow. Thank you very much.
David Hershey.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm not here for the gun issue, thankfully. But actually, I, I work, as you know, with the Economic Development Corporation here in the county, and this month is national, or this month is Industry Appreciation Month, and the first Friday of the month, we have Manufacturing Day. And then, I just wanted to come and also thank you guys for the resolution designating the month of October as Industry Appreciation Month here in the county. Just a couple, you know, quick things. A third of the jobs in the county actually have direct, are directly tied to manufacturing. Now, if we, if we extended that to... Now, if we, if we extended that to, you know, derivatives, it's probably a half. Our manufacturing businesses actually help diversify our tax base and make, make it so that we can have a fair, kind of more equitable distribution of taxes. And as part of this month-long celebration, we are doing plant tours next week. If anyone would like to come, can certainly email me. I've tried to hit every one, but we're going to be touring Energizer, where they actually make the batteries, not the packaging that most people get, and Tower Components, which makes evaporative cooling for nuclear facilities, so two good places. Then we're going to have a, what we call Forklift Rodeo, so, which was a new thing to me. I thought, we're going to have hydraulics on those forklifts, making them bounce. Actually, no, it's kind of more like turns and, you know, those sort of things, safety. And then we'll conclude the month with a milestone appreciation luncheon. And just want to share my gratitude to you all for, for your wise stewardship and for helping us make the county business-friendly and bring businesses here. Every business that comes here or that is here is a, it supports employees, and those employees support families. So it's, it's, you know, part of, of keeping the county in the right place in that way in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, that's it. Thank you for everybody who participated in the public comment. Is this on? Can you hear this? All right, okay, all right. Okay, so we'll proceed on with our agenda in by approving the agenda. If there are any changes or deletions or corrections or amendments to the agenda, now would be the time to speak up on those. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and a motion passes. All right. Also, now we're going to move to the consent agenda. We're going to, is there any particular item, as usual, that we would like to pull off to the consent agenda or give special consideration to? All right, you good? Oh, he's waving goodbye, okay. He threw me off there. Wait a minute. Okay, so, well, if it would please the board, before we do this real quick, I would like to just, not pulling this item off, but the Economic Development Corporation, I would just mentioned, I'm going to take a second, if it's okay, to just read that resolution. So this is from Randolph County Economic Development Corporation, Industry Appreciation Month, which is October 2025. Whereas the county of Randolph is pleased to have a thriving community of industries and support the local economy, and whereas these industrial companies provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of the county of Randolph, and whereas these industrial companies provide local revenues from which the entire citizenry benefit, and whereas industrial businesses make considerable contributions to our families and communities, often improving the overall quality of life, and whereas we recognize and appreciate these individual industrial businesses. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Randolph County, do hereby recognize our existing industrial businesses, and by virtue of this proclamation, give notice to our citizens that the month of October in 2025 is Industry Appreciation Month in the county of Randolph. So I just wanted to read that, and if there's nothing else that anyone else would like to pull off the consent agenda, I'd consider a motion to approve that.
Just one point real quick.
Yes, sir.
Item F, we have Mr. Jaden Scott here with us. He's getting appointed to the Randolph County Juvenile Crime Prevention. Young man that is interested in local government, and anytime we like to see young people willing to get involved, it's good to, it's good to have him, and we appreciate you being willing to serve on, on a board here in Randolph County.
Absolutely. And that's, that's a great point, Mr. Ravenbark. Certainly, as we look at that consent agenda, kind of every month with all the people who are willing to serve the county and a lot of our different boards and commissions that do want to say thank you and appreciate that. I know a lot of our board members spend a lot of time trying to recruit folks to fill some of those spaces. Ms. Haywood's got somebody on this one here. We certainly appreciate that as well. So anyway, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second.
Consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Okay, so we'll move into new business here. Let's see, who is up here? Mr.?
Ms. Kim.
Ms. Kim. Okay, thank you.
While she's walking up, I'll give her the grand introduction. Tim Mangum is going to join, your new planning director, Kim Heinzler, coming up to tell us about the signed ordinance, UDO update.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. What you have before you is the percent, the, oh, you're, sorry, I'm short. What you have before you is the proposed signed regulation updates. The planning staff spent many hours reviewing our existing sign regulations and comparing surrounding jurisdictions, and we agreed, and we felt that the best proposal was put before you. After a few suggestions and minor changes related to the outdoor advertising signs, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption of those updates. And if you have any questions, Tim and I will try to answer them.
Well, I want to, I certainly appreciate, let me just say real quickly, it's okay with the board, I really appreciate the planning staff and everybody's working on this, and certainly the board for putting a lot of time and effort into this. Just going to mention, and I don't want to use this as an excuse tonight, but in talking with the chairman today and myself, which I know we had the opportunity, and some of us submitted some questions, I had a few more questions than I know the chairman did, and I think this is a pretty big piece of work here. So I think, I feel like it considers, you know, something that needs the consideration of the whole board. And I know, speaking with Chairman Frye, again, I don't want to speak for him, but he had several questions and some clarification points.
Right.
And so I would think if it's okay with the board, it would be in order to maybe table this until our November meeting.
We're going to do a public hearing this evening first.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and do our public hearings, we hear from the public.
Okay.
But then, just.
Okay.
But that's fine, you might need to stay for the public hearing.
Open it up to anybody.
All right, so we will open the, the public hearing for the proposed changes to the UDO. And so that, thank you for staying for a second. So, either way, that's fine.
Okay, I'll stay.
I might have a question. So, so now, so this is a public hearing, so anybody here from the public who wishes to speak for or against, or has any concerns about this issue, please come forward. You didn't need to previously sign up, it's a public hearing. So hearing, nothing from, from anybody on either side of that, then we'll close the public hearing, and then, but thank you for your time and being here tonight. David, did you have a?
No, I guess, was there any, was the planning board required to have a public hearing as well, or was any public input on?
We were required to have a public hearing. I, this matter was on several times, the planning board, there were a couple of revisions and versions of this document that went through. I don't recall anyone from the public speaking. Mr. Mangum is shaking his head, and so I, I don't believe so. There was no input from any realtors or any of the sign leasing companies or, you know, so they usually come and complain about it afterwards.
Okay, okay.
And so, but we didn't, we didn't have any public input.
I would make a statement while they're here that I did hear from someone who is in the sign business, and they were very pleased with the work. It had addressed some issues from, you know, some ongoing issues from years past, and so they felt like it, that the board had done a very good job with it, so.
And if I could, Mr. Vice Chair, I mean, I want to brag on the planning department.
Please do.
They work really hard. This is, it's, it's a hard thing. I mean, it, you know, from, someone from the outside would look at that and think that this is an easy task, but once you start drilling down into it and looking at it, it's, it's a hard thing to, to put together that would encompass every conceivable situation. And so this is their best attempt at doing that. They worked really hard on that. It went through several versions. And I also think for this board, I don't, I think tabling is probably not a bad thing. It's something that requires you to study it for some time. And I know Mr. Allen and I were talking about, Commissioner Allen, we're talking about some questions, and based on his questions, I told him I need to go back and read that ordinance based on the questions that, that he's, that he's given. So I just, I want to make those statements as it applies to the planning department and the planning board.
All right, so, well, I'll just, certainly, I appreciate you saying the same about the hard work put in by the department and by that board, and I'll take some of the blame for this, I mean, as far as, from a commissioner's standpoint, I think, you know, like I said, the chairman kind of agreed with me. It's not that y'all haven't put in a lot of work on this, and we've, you know, made some changes and made a lot of alterations, it's just that we've only had less than a week to really look at it and dig through it, so there's a lot of different things. So I don't have any opposition to it, I have a couple of questions, but, you know, I would just like to have a little bit more time, if that pleases the board. But we'll, is there any, is there a motion from the board?
To table.
I'd make a motion to table this until the next month's meeting.
So we have a motion to, to table it just until next month's meeting?
Which will be November 3rd, 6 o'clock.
November 3rd, 6 o'clock.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's any more discussion, then we'll move to a vote. All in favor of tabling this motion as made by Commissioner Ravenbark until our next meeting on November?
3rd.
3rd. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, so we will table that until next, until November, excuse me, 3rd. So thank you. Let's see, we'll see if we can find, I think, Taylor and, is it Taylor and?
Yep.
Both of them coming, so anyway, so we're going to, our next item is the Agricultural Center, let's see, what do we call this part, Taylor? The Commercial Kitchen Rates and Fees. All right, great. So Sophie and Taylor will take it away.
All right, good evening. I hope y'all are doing well this evening, and thank you for your time. Here with me tonight is Sophie Farlow. She is the Local Food Systems Agent for Randolph County Cooperative Extension, and she has been working on this for a little over three years. She has been researching and collaborating with commercial kitchens across our state. She has been partnering with the Randolph County Public Health Department and the NCDAs. So she is the true expert and mastermind behind our commercial kitchens, and she is here to answer any of those questions that I am not educated enough to tackle. So we are here tonight to review the proposed commercial kitchen rates and associated fees, and as board action, we are seeking approval of those proposed rates and fees. A little bit of an overview, the goal of this shared-use commercial kitchen facility is to allow renters to create, grow, and expand their food business. So whether that's a hobbyist who likes to bake bread on the weekends, or a food entrepreneur who is starting their own food business, this facility has been designed intentionally to cater to those individuals. There is an application and an onboarding orientation that's required. Food handler certifications will be required for individuals accessing and using the facility, and the facility itself includes two separate spaces equipped with commercial-grade equipment, separate ventilation to prevent cross-contamination, walk-in coolers, walk-in freezers, and dry storage space that is available for rent. It is considered a high-risk facility and will be inspected by the NCDAs and Randolph County Environmental Health. It is not inclusive of raw processing. Here we have our rates and policies that are associated with the commercial kitchen spaces. We do have a follow-up slide after this that will show some comparisons to some other facilities that are county-owned and operated across the state. You can see the one-time application fee, various rental fees and usage fees, as well as some policy violation fees. And again, all of those policies and procedures will be gone over with any individual that's using the space as part of that onboarding orientation. So you can see here that we have some comparison rates from different commercial kitchen facilities in the state. We also conducted, well, Randolph County Cooperative Extension conducted a commercial kitchen interest survey with Randolph County citizens and citizens in the region back in 2023, and part of that survey data showed us that a majority of participants are in the "I'm dreaming of this" stage with their food business, their entrepreneurship, or they're in their startup initial phase. That data led us to develop rates and fees that keep this space accessible for our intended audience. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I would just like to say, for those that are listening at home, or those that are in the audience that are not familiar with what's involved, if someone wants to have food items that they sell out of their home, then they have to completely set their kitchen up for that. You cannot have a dog in the house. So I didn't say you couldn't have one in the kitchen, I said you could not have one in the house. So for somebody who's looking at, you know, testing the waters, starting, you know, with a product that they would like to try to sell, I think this is an amazing opportunity. I appreciate the research that's been done and the comparisons that you made with other places that offer a commercial kitchen. I certainly think the, the prices are within reason, especially for that person who would like to try this without completely converting their kitchen first. And then, if that's what they want to do, so be it, but I know the one I saw in Hillsborough, there were people, vendors, that had continued to use it over the period of time and had been very successful in using it. So I think it's a great opportunity to bring to Randolph County to anyone who's interested in going that route. So thank you for your work on this.
We're really excited to see how the community engages with it.
So the, the kitchen space, I know it's got all the stoves and all that, pots, pans, is that stuff that they have to bring? Or is that stuff, any of that stuff provided, or how's that work?
So our commercial kitchens will provide the large equipment, the commercial-grade equipment, any of the items that you're referencing that will be used for the preparation, knives, spoons, mixing, small mixing bowls, we'll have a commercial-grade mixer, which is really exciting, but those bowls and types of equipment that you're referencing will be brought on site.
Do, do those coming in have to be safe-serve and everything stamped on, on those?
So not necessarily. All of the, the products that, so they go through a process of what individuals plan to produce, so we will sit down with them and go through all of that. They'll have to do separate applications for different types of products, and so those prep items will also be included in that as well. So, but most of your, like, smallwares, your knives, measuring cups, things like that, do not have to be as long as they're properly sanitized and cleaned before and after.
I can just see spaghetti-stained tupperware coming in to mix it in, you know how that goes.
I found it interesting that, that the group did, did research about what items to make, to invest in, to make part of the commercial kitchen. And what was the item from Jefferson that they said don't invest in? Do either one of you remember?
I think it was a hand pie maker.
A what?
It was a hand pie maker.
A ha, that's right. Pies that are, like, have the cramped edges, you know, that you, that somebody would want to sell, and so, do you, do you remember how much it was?
Thousands of dollars, over, over $10,000.
And they said, yeah, don't invest in that wasted money, so.
There's definitely been a lot of research.
Yes. So I appreciate the due diligence that's been done on so many levels, if the public only knew, and certainly things can be added, but it's interesting to know what has gone into it, so thank you for that.
And it's the delivery thing, which I hadn't thought about. I guess users of the kitchen can have their deliveries made to the commercial kitchen, but they may not be there. So included in that is a fee for, at some point, maybe the kitchen manager, we're not to that point yet, but the ag extension staff not have to drop what they're doing and act as the delivery clerk bringing stuff in. So I'm glad to see. glad to see that is in there. Certainly, we want people to utilize it. And cold storage is, uh, a premium, uh, throughout North Carolina for agricultural products. So, uh, we certainly want people to use it, but we also want them to, um, be aware it's not, there's a cost to it as well. And I think from what we've tried to do is, you know, we're not looking to make money. Some of these, I'm not sure the other kitchens, um, there are some for profit and some not for profit. So we certainly would like to, love to break even on this, but it does provide an avenue for value-added agriculture products that are, uh, hopefully raised in, in Randolph County to be value-added and, and put to market. But otherwise, uh, that opportunity wouldn't be available. So, uh, I hope that stimulates the economy and, you know, there, there are stories of folks baking in their kitchen. I can't remember any particular ones right now where they baked cookies and now they're, uh, multimillion-dollar enterprise. So that's, that's where we'd like to get with some of these folks. So appreciate the work y'all done.
Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say if, if there's any possibility that you have, like, a tasting committee that volunteer at the kitchen, you know?
Would you like to be the chairman of our tasting committee? We can, we can make that happen.
All the commissioners and two other people.
Be, be careful what you might-
What I'm tasting.
Yeah.
You want those expensive pies.
Sauce is supposed to be a very popular, uh, example of, of a, a commercial kitchen. When everybody, we look at somebody, "Well, you got, bringing in sauce, that would be a value-added product." So depending on how hot the salsa is, I'm not sure.
I'm in.
Get involved in that.
Okay. Alright. But, so, are there any more questions, comments? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the Agricultural Center Commercial Kitchen Fee Schedule as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. If there's no more discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Alright, thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you so much.
And I, I can taste sauce, I'm good. Count me in. Okay. Can't be too hot. Okay, I believe I'm gonna call on the county manager to handle our next agenda item here for the reclassification.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Typically, we try to handle reclassifications during the budgeting process, uh, but occasionally there are, uh, logical and good reasons to, to deal with them mid-year for necessary or opportunistic, uh, needs. I come to you this evening with three specific reclassifications, uh, and I'll go over them. And I wanted to mention that on your memo within the actual agenda on the back page two, uh, there is the, an action item requested that's a little more specific than what's provided in your notes. So it's, uh, ties in the three different things that I'm gonna talk about here. Um, so if you choose at the end to, to make a motion, feel free to reference that. Uh, three departments that I'm, I'm looking to do, uh, a reclassification. The planning department's seen some, uh, evolution. We're gonna have some retirements coming up and, and a new director. Our intention with this, uh, change is to, to have the GIS planner role become a senior planner. Uh, it's a little bit more modern title, uh, when we go out and try to hire folks to fill these roles. We want to make sure that we're as attractive and, uh, and aligned with the community, uh, at large, uh, that we're battling against to get these folks. So that's the reason for that request. Uh, in administration, uh, finance, again, we're trying to, to prepare the bench and, and get ready for some succession planning. We've had one deputy finance officer for a number of years, and it's our intention to create a second position. Um, currently, Michael McKenzie serves in a reporting specialist position, and we feel, uh, it's appropriate for him to be considered and moved into the role of deputy finance officer, the second position. Uh, that position does require your approval and a five, five, $500,000 fidelity bond. Um, so that's part of that motion that I'll ask for you to consider, uh, when I get done here. The last item is one we've heard about for, uh, a number of years. Uh, the folks in 911 have really been battling some staffing issues. Uh, we pulled some money forward from last year to fund, uh, two, uh, I don't even know what to call them, but, but, uh, out-of-town folks to come in and serve and, and just give a, a little respite to some of our folks for a six-month period. That six-month period is almost at its end, and, uh, we're still battling trying to, to keep folks and, and get folks in the door that, that do what's a very difficult job. And so, uh, the intention with this change would be to, to move, uh, all of 911 Division of Emergency Services, uh, one step up, which would put them aligned with coming in the door, EMS folks in that same department. Uh, the, the effort here on the 911 would be effective on 11/1, while the effective date for the deputy finance officer would be October 16th. Glad to answer any questions that you have and appreciate your time and consideration.
Alright, any questions for county manager on these changes? I know we've discussed the 911, and we've all kind of been wringing our hands over that for a few months, so I'm kind of glad to see we're taking even a little bit bigger step trying to shore that up. And my question was about the effective dates. You already answered that. Are you any other questions for any other commissioner? Oh, move without rea-, so I would consider a motion if it's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed position reclassifications. Uh, appoint Michael McKenzie as the deputy finance officer effective, uh, October 16th, 2025, and adopt the association, associated budget amendment.
Does that cover what we need to cover?
That's what we need to do.
Madam Clerk and, Mr., okay. Alright, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second. If there's no more discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, and I will also turn it over again, I think, to our county manager, Zeb Holden here, to, um, just begin this discussion here about our next agenda item here.
Yes, sir. As you see in your agenda, there's a memo regarding, uh, kind of the history of how we've reached this point, uh, with renewable natural gas, uh, at the landfill. Paxton Arthur's, our engineer's gonna kind of give you some bullet points of how we got to this point. Uh, but, uh, you'll see at the end, we feel like the commissioners have the information necessary to make a wise decision, and we look forward to working with you and working with the partner that you all select.
Good evening. Yeah, the manager asked me to give a little background and explain how we got to this point. I wanted to start out, just talk a little bit about history. Um, back in 2011, we first started seriously looking at the landfill and hired engineering firms to start doing the permitting and engineering designs. In 2013, we went through the same process we're doing tonight for the construction and operation of the landfill. And at that point, we chose Waste Management as our operating partner. And, um, when we did the actual contracting later, we specified in the contract that the county would retain the rights to the landfill gas. And that's what led to why I'm here tonight. Um, in the end of 2016, uh, Waste Management was, after a year of construction, they were able to get their permit to operate. And so in early 17, the Greater Glenfield opened. At that point, you know, there was the possibility of, of producing methane gas. And so a year later, Waste Management obtained their Title V air permit from the state. Um, two years later, they installed a voluntary gas collection system. It wasn't required at this point. However, Waste Management, in order to reduce emissions and control odors better, they went ahead and installed it ahead of time. Uh, in 2022, they expanded that system to sort of prepare for mandatory gas collection. Um, then last fall, we hired Labella Associates to help us to write the RFP. And then earlier this year, we issued the actual RFP document. A little background on our consultants. As I mentioned, we hired Labella to help us write the RFP. They were already doing work for Waste Management. They were doing the, the groundwater and gas sampling and monitoring. Um, we reached out to them when we learned that they had a, a strong background in gas systems. And, uh, first we reached out to Waste Management, make sure there was no conflict on their end, and there wasn't. Um, however, Labella agreed to help us with the writing the RFP. However, they said from the onset, they really did not want to do the review and, and make any choices. They, they didn't want to pick sides because they do deal with a lot of consultants. And sure enough, as soon as we got our proposals in, there was at least two companies that had history working with Labella. It would have been a conflict of interest. So at that point, the, the manager made some calls and learned of another company, Smith Gardner, who also has a very strong background in gas projects. And they do not have any conflicts with the four, um, shortlisted firms. So we then hired Smith Gardner to help us with the interview and evaluation of the firms. Little background on the landfill itself. Here's a site plan. As you can see, you've got the, uh, streams and buffers and the footprint of the landfill. Zooming in a little bit to the actual working face, you can see they have the gas collection wells and lateral pipes leading to the flare and compressors there in the yellow circle. Here's some examples. Uh, to the left is a typical landfill gas extraction well. Photo on the right is a typical, call it a candlestick flare, where they're currently burning the, the methane that's produced. The, uh, lamp, the RFP document was very thorough. We issued it in May, and it was about 18 pages long that explained, you know, what we were wanting the, these companies to provide us, what information. In addition to that, we also had several, four appendices, uh, which gave additional information on the landfill, on the gas collection system, and the waste, as, as well as a model that was produced by Labella that modeled the future volume of landfill gas that's predicted. There, on the top right, you can sort of see a graph that represents that model. Some of the companies use that information. Some of them use that to create their own volumes. Um, we also issued three addendums, the answered questions and provided more information. And right from the very beginning in, um, addendum number one, we gave a 30-day time extension. Um, gave them more time to prepare their proposals and specifically more time to reach out to Piedmont Natural Gas for more information on the gas line connection. We had a very good turnout. We were pleased. We had eight firms that submitted proposals. Uh, the staff then reviewed those proposals and ranked them and came up with four firms that we shortlisted. They are Evansaw, Spark Renewables, Wagga Energy, and Waste Management Renewable Energy. Later in, in August, we interviewed all four of these firms. The chairman and Commissioner Allen, since it's in his district, all, they said in on those interviews as well, along with a representative from, uh, Smith Gardner. Since that time, Smith Gardner has provided a memo where they evaluated these firms. You should all have a copy of that. And one of the key takeaways from that memo is that all four of these firms are highly qualified, and they have records of successful projects under their belt. So it's really just a matter of which, which we feel most comfortable with. Next steps, um, assuming you select a preferred partner tonight, uh, we will then go into a 60-day due diligence period for that firm. After that, we will go into contract negotiations. Uh, we already have prospects for a, a potential attorney to help us with that. After the contracts, uh, we will then come back to this board for approval. And so my request for tonight is that you select a preferred renewable natural gas partner and that you authorize county staff to enter contract negotiations at the earliest possible date. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'd just like to, to add on that, uh, the, the effort and the time and the expertise that staff, uh, as well as our contracted engineers have done on this project, um, it's been a lot. They've done a lot of work, a lot of legwork. The RFP was designed to get as close to what we were looking for as possible within the realm of what we knew could be done out there. And, uh, we're, we're very pleased with, with what we have as opportunities here. Um, we held a, a public meeting, uh, last Monday, or the 22nd, we had a, a meeting to kind of go through and touch on details and answer questions that the board may have. Um, there, there will be continuing. Even once we selected a partner, there will be questions, uh, that we'll work through those and, and, uh, address those with the selected partner. And, and presuming it goes well, we will work to establish a contract with that entity. And if we can't seem to get on the same page, then we'll have a backup. We'll move on to the next one. Um, but I just, I, I do want to take the time to say a very thorough process has been established and run through, and we feel like, um, we really have as much information in hand as possible. Uh, that being said, there will always be more questions, and if the, there's anything that the board has, we're glad to try to answer that this evening.
This, this is the time for questions and comments for all the staff involved.
Uh, I was sat on the interviews and, and, uh, hopefully tried to convey, along myself and the chairman, the, um, the complexities of, uh, each one of the proposals and, and the presentations. Um, I, I did want to mention that, you know, we did have Smith Gardner as a consultant, but they didn't, they didn't make a recommendation, uh, per se. So, but they basically said, "Anyone you choose would be qualified." So that, this is, this is the board's decision, and it's not necessarily based on, uh, a consultant's opinion. But, um, there were so many different variables out there, uh, in, in looking at it. Um, it made it, made it hard. There's just a lot of information, trying to learn a new, um, vocabulary as far as, uh, the acronyms and everything. Uh, so it's been, uh, challenging, but I think staff did an excellent job, um, and, and the folks that presented did an excellent job. But I think we're to the point now where, um, literally, gas is, money's burning out there. We're to the point now where, uh, that we need to get moving. And there's also some other incentives out there as far as, uh, potential tax credits and whatnot for potentially that would be shared with the county, um, from, with the, the provider of the service. So, um, you know, I, I went through personally about 15 different items, uh, that I thought was important in looking at the, the various aspects from, uh, the amount of neighborhood disturbance, since that's near the landfill. Is it gonna be intrusive to the neighborhood any more than landfill already is? To, to the marketing of the gas, to how the, the presentation of the gas coming from the collection system, the, uh, of course, the financial arrangements. But I don't think this is necessarily a financial decision. So that's kind of what I wanted to, to, to convey is, it's, it's more than just that. And this is, this was a, I believe, a 20-year, uh, 20, 25-year looking period. The gas is gonna last longer than that.
Yes.
So, um, but it is a long-term decision. So, but I feel like we need to, to get started tonight.
If I could just say for the benefit of anybody here who may not know, and for the benefit of any public that might be listening online, I'm the teacher, so I kind of start at the bottom. And for those that may not know, methane is a greenhouse gas that can be captured and transformed from a pollutant into a local renewable energy source that can replace fossil fuels. So.
Methane's actually about 20 times worse than carbon dioxide.
Yes. So I don't want to offend anybody, but I just want to get information out for those that may not know. Thank you.
Which is why you have to destroy it with the flare. However, when we were destroying it, we're basically burning money. So quicker we can convert that to a gas we can sell, the better off.
Exactly.
And we're not gonna start tomorrow, because it's a-
No, it's a two-year at least process.
A two-year build at least to, to get anything. So, uh, even after we, uh, negotiate and, and get a contract, so.
Well, I was just gonna say just quickly, um, yeah, it's, it was certainly complicated. I mean, it's very complicated and all these different, you know, values. And I, I mean, I can't even quite figure out exactly what the items called that we're selling. So, you know, what unit it is that we're, yes. Anyway, but, um, but, you know, I had, we, we did have a public meeting, you know, which was very informative, and I had a lot of questions. I mean, I still have a lot of questions. Um, and I guess that's on me for just not, you know, asking the right questions in a timely manner. Um, and then, of course, I appreciate you and the, Mr. Allen, you and the chairman sitting in on all those interviews. Um, you know, it'd be great, but we can't do that as a board. I mean, it's being impossible to do for all five of us sitting on those. So that's hard to accomplish. And so I'm glad you were there. Um, I would like to kind of ask some of these, you know, participants in these negotiations here, you know- these negotiations here, you know, some specific questions. Myself, I'd dig down a little deeper. But, you know, it is what it is. We're hard to do. And so without getting into the weeds of like the details of all the different contracts and everything that we were looking at, proposals, I do, I am concerned. I have a few questions still. I'm personally not ready to make a decision tonight. And I know in speaking with the chairman, Daryl, you know, he has a few questions and a few concerns and some things he'd like to clear up. And with talking to him, I do feel like this issue is pretty huge for the next however many years in Randolph County. It's not next year or two, it's the next forty years in Randolph County. It's a big decision, and I think it deserves the full consideration of the whole board. And without him here, I know that's awkward, but I'm just going to say it, you know, I'd love, he would like to be here, and I'd like to be here to, you know, ask some of these questions and dig a little bit deeper into a couple of different things. So I would, you know, like to table it or figure out how to move it to November to make a decision on choosing a partner. But that's just me. So that's my comment on it for the board.
Time is somewhat...
I realize we're burning gas out there.
Well, but the investment tax credit too.
Yeah.
Some of these folks have squirreled away some equipment that would be used out there.
We thought, that's a legitimate concern. I mean, we're burning off gas, and if the tax credits expire on the equipment...
And honestly, I, there's going to be questions, you know, we still have some questions about, you know, Piedmont Natural Gas. And I don't think those are going to be answered until we work with a partner.
Yeah. I mean, I think forty percent of my questions are involved in that Piedmont Natural Gas relationship and that pipeline, and where's that going, and what does that look like in five years, ten years, whatever. So, which makes me kind of question, you know, a lot of the, you know, proposals are these big assumptions of how much gas and, you know, I kind of want to bottom-line guarantee number, this is what we know today, and what does it look like today? Assuming things would never change, what does it look like today? And I don't have a real clear answer on that. I mean, I know everybody's going to say there's going to be more gas, okay, but I want a guarantee for now. Like, because if I look at some of them, some of the numbers are awesome, but there's no guarantee. I mean, I have a hard time in my business using the word guarantee.
Well, there is some, there is some minimum payments regardless of once the plant's up to account for downtime. So there is, there is that.
There's also unknowns. I mean, they have to make assumptions to develop that model, but they ultimately, you know, that they can't guarantee how much gas in the future. They, they're certain that it's going to continue to rise, but, you know, no crystal ball to...
The makeup of what's going in the landfill.
Yeah, that's part of it, the more organic material, the more gas. We actually reached out to Piedmont Natural Gas and had a meeting with them to try to get some of this information. And that's the reason that we actually did the time extension, is because they were hesitant to provide, I guess, information to send out to the group. They preferred the individual, the companies reached out then one-on-one. And I think, once we choose a partner, then that company can get a lot more information from Piedmont Natural Gas, I think. Of course, some of the companies don't even plan to go that route. You know, one of the companies plans to do a virtual pipeline and actually truck it out of the county.
Which would put a few more trucks on the road.
Would put more trucks on the road. Again, it would give them a better market to sell the gas. They wouldn't be relying on one Piedmont Natural Gas. So, I mean, there's pros and cons.
So, one thing I'll make a note of is, is we do have a letter from Piedmont Natural Gas that basically says there's capacity for twenty-one hundred SEFM a day, or SEFM a day, that's correct, to get into the pipeline immediately adjacent to the property. And the production of gas presently on the site is in the seventeen hundred range, but that's all the gases. That's not the purified methane. So there's a time period, if the company that we choose ultimately is looking to get into that Piedmont Natural Gas pipeline, there's a time period for them to research and develop the next step. The engineers that provided the memorandum after the interviews, we had kind of made a point to say there's too much opportunity for that to be it. If that's, if we pick a company that chooses to go into that gas line, they're not going to stop when it fills up, because there's too much opportunity. Whether it be virtually trucking it, or virtual pipeline via trucking it, or some other option, it will be pursued, because there's just too much opportunity. That being said, they did take the time to prepare approximate returns, if that is all anybody chose to do. I think that's good information to have, but they make pretty clear in that memo that that's, that won't be it, that they will find a way to monetize what's out there, because the growth will be too, it's gonna, it won't be a perfect bell curve, but at the end of this fifteen, twenty-year term, whatever we ultimately do with an organization, it will still be going up and potentially for a couple of years thereafter before the gas production declines. So just a little bit of clarity that there is some acknowledgement from Piedmont Natural Gas that that line can be tapped. It's pretty remarkable how much money they charge for you to tap into that, five-point-three million dollars. Goodness. Where's the watchdog on that? But there's life after that, is what the memo said from the engineer that we hired.
And there is no upfront money for us in this process, you know?
From anybody, right?
From any, we're not having to pay you, other than consultants.
It's good that you clarify that. It kind of felt like there might be a paper bag somewhere, upfront money for us. There's no cost to the county.
Yeah, no cost to the county as far as an investment, the provider that we partnered with would provide.
All four firms have said that they will cover the cost of building the plant and making the connection, other than the cost of a consultant and attorney.
Right.
I would also say that I feel like our staff has worked on this for quite a long time. I feel like they've brought us valuable information, they've sought out different consultants. I don't know that there's anything I personally would know in a month that I don't know right now. And this decision, the decision on the signs, that doesn't cost us anything to delay that decision. This decision costs our taxpayers. And if I felt like there was something to be gained by that, then I certainly would be the first to vote to, you know, to table that. But I am comfortable voting now. I've made a list of some things that I, you know, that were important to me. I'll be glad to discuss those. But as I said, we try to be fiscally responsible, and I don't think we'll learn anything that we don't already know in a month's time.
To the manager's point, we may not know exactly, no guarantee on gas, but I think we can feel confident that any company we choose, it's in their best interest to maximize as much gas as they can. Because although they're sharing their revenue, they're also keeping a good portion of it. So...
All that being said, we are at the ready to serve at the board's pleasure. Whatever you all would like to do, if we want to hold off or move forward, we're ready to go.
I would also note that it, that the request is that we select a partner to work with, a preferred partner, and authorize the staff to enter contract negotiations. So that does not mean, as our manager has already pointed out, that we're married. It is that this is where we will start contract negotiations. And if they fall apart, then we'll be back to, you know, to someone else.
That's a good point. And I think even in our public meeting, we had an example of a nearby municipality or county who started some negotiations with one company, and that didn't work out so well, and they restarted negotiations with another company.
Exactly.
We're asking somebody out to the prom this time. When we get to the contract negotiation stage, then that's when we get married, when we get the contract. Mr. Vice Chair, if you're ready for a motion...
I just, my only hesitation is, you know, Chairman Fry, I think, has some questions that he doesn't have answered. And he wasn't able to be here tonight, nothing on his, just not showing up. It was, you know, and I think he has some concerns, and he doesn't feel comfortable, because he wants, he's got some questions he needs answered. And out of respect for him, you know, I would like for him to just be able to answer his, ask his questions and get some answers on those. That's my only holdup, is I'm not sure what questions he has.
Well, at the meeting, you know, we had a pretty decent consensus on where we were.
I agree. I totally agree.
And I don't know that that's going to change. So, Mr. Vice Chair, if it's appropriate, I'll make a motion to select Waga Energy as the preferred renewable natural gas partner perceived, with the process to proceed as presented, we talked about tonight.
Yes, sir. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, and a second. So is there any more discussion? And Waga is the preferred partner.
Preferred partner.
So, but we still have time for discussion, if there's any more discussion. Well, if there's no more discussion, then we'll...
Oh, wait, oh, wait. You asking for discussion now?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, then I would like for the public to know some things about why. I don't want them to be in the dark about why, you know, I mean, I've read these, oh, my gosh, it is a bit over my head. I've done research. And so I just would like to say several things. One, you already heard me say that one of the companies would be putting more trucks on the road. And for the people that live in that area, they've had a lot of disruptions, and I think they would appreciate not having more trucks on the road. I would also say that for Waga, the footprint is smaller. And to me, that is important. I also think that would be important for the people who live there. Waga is the company that takes all the gas produced by the landfill. And if I understand it correctly, it's because they have a unique technology which they patented and earlier this summer, I think. And it is called a Waga Box, and it uses cryptogenic distillation combined with membrane filtration to extract methane gas from the landfill. So they extract it, but they take it all and then extract the methane. So I think it's important that with that technology, they can take it all. And they're the only company that can do that because of that technology which they have patented. Their long-term business model, according to my research, they act as developer, financier, and operator. So they are in the position to do those things, and I like that. Their technology is quieter. I am sure Commissioner Allen, as have I, as I have, have gotten those calls from the people who live there with some of their complaints. And so to have that quieter technology would be valuable to the people that live there. They already work with one county and are in negotiations with a large metropolitan area that is near here. Both of those are within an hour of here. So that would be to their advantage, and I think to ours. They happen to have the best financial officer, excuse me, the best financial offer, but even if it were, you know, lower, I like all those things about them. So I just wanted to put that out, so the public will know where I'm coming from in my thoughts. You're welcome.
Good info, good info. Did anybody else have any other discussion topics? We do have a motion and a second, but I don't want to cut off debate. But if it pleases the board, we'll move to a voice vote. So a motion has been made and seconded to select Waga, per the motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So the motion passes, three to one, to proceed with Waga into our due diligence period. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Okay. Sixty-day due diligence period. So we will proceed with that, and we will keep the public updated on how everything's going process-wise. So the next issue here is probably a little bit easier, since Dr. Genie's here. So this is to set our annual meeting...
Thank you.
What do you call it, David, his favorite day of the year?
It's your favorite day of the year.
Favorite day of the year.
This year was January the twelfth, twenty twenty-sixth.
At four-thirty.
Is that right?
So for information, we wanted to make sure you had that marked as your favorite day.
January four o'clock.
Four o'clock. So, four o'clock, if it's, then it'll be favorite. So is there any discussion on this issue? If not, I would entertain a motion to set this date.
I make a motion to set the annual meeting with the Randolph County School Board of Education, January twelfth, twenty-sixth, at four o'clock at the Board of Education Meeting Room at the McDowell Center.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, January twelfth at four o'clock will be our annual meeting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our next item is our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule. I know staff made a couple of changes, and I think that's been going over with everybody, a couple of different days you want to address.
I'll mention that. There was really only one date that had a conflict next year. Labor Day will fall on the seventh, which is when our meeting traditionally would been. I don't think anybody likes to come back from a long weekend vacation and have the first day back be a Commissioners' Meeting Day. So rather than postponing and looking at the fourteenth of September, which feels awful late for a Board of Commissioners' meeting, we would propose moving it to September first, which would be a Tuesday, the Tuesday before Labor Day twenty twenty-six. Otherwise, the calendar would be very consistent. All the dates otherwise lined up, and NACO was not a conflict this year.
Anybody else have any other changes you want to address quickly? If not, I know everybody's seen that. I would entertain a motion to pass that regular meeting schedule.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-sixth Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, we'll vote on that. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. All right. Well, I certainly appreciate your help with the agenda here tonight. Have we got anything else, Mr. Manager?
I'm going to give a shout-out to the staff that are still here, stuck it out to the end. I appreciate you all. Thank you for being here and paying attention, know what's going on and being available as needed. We appreciate you greatly.
Does anybody else have any announcements or concerns or prayer requests?
I have a couple of items. First, I'd like to say that last month, I regretted missing an opportunity to make the public aware of a new provider in our community. There was discussion about the homeless population, and there is a new provider where the former men's shelter was located. It is in the same place, but the provider has changed. And it is Place of Grace, and we've heard nothing but good. The city, they've passed city inspections. Before, they can increase their capacity. There are others that need to be passed, but they are working on those. And as they grow, and as they get in a stronger financial position and can hire additional help, then they can expand and take more people and hopefully shelter people and get them off the streets. So, so far, it's all been good. I continue to monitor that, to ask questions of the city, of their board members, and everybody's very pleased with what they've seen. I would encourage you that if you have worked with a nonprofit of any kind, a church, that is looking to partner, not just financially, but to spend some time there. Or if you're looking to do some projects of some kind, please go by. I can put you in touch with the director there, and they would be most appreciative. I also have a statement that I would like to read, if you will bear with me for just a minute here. And I am going to read it. So, those of you left in the meeting probably remember when I was sworn in just over seven years ago now. Most of you also remember my story, that I was pressed into... Most of you also remember my story, that I was pressed into service reluctantly when I lost my husband, the late Commissioner Stan Haywood. Although becoming a county commissioner was never on my bucket list, I have grown immensely from tackling the challenges placed before me. I have been stretched in ways that I never thought possible, and I am deeply grateful. Since then, I have gotten to know Randolph County and its people very well. I am thankful for the trust that you have placed in me. It has been the honor of a lifetime to represent all of the people in our county, not just those who look and believe like me. It has been my habit to do comprehensive research, to talk with those who would be impacted by my decisions, to seek information from those with professional knowledge and experience, and to seek wisdom from those with lived experience. I have worked to be transparent and to serve the people of Randolph County and my God with the utmost integrity. For all the employees of Randolph County Government, you have made me look good. The buzzwords in and around these days are secret sauce, and you are our secret sauce. Our citizens do not know how fortunate they are to have you providing the services that they enjoy. You have taken my calls, you have answered my questions, and you have patiently explained the work that you do. Randolph County employs close to a thousand people. It takes the efforts of every one of you and those who work under you to keep Randolph County Government running effectively and serving our citizens well. So with this statement, I am announcing that I will not be seeking reelection next year. My term expires December first of twenty twenty-six. I want to give your next commissioner time to prepare and to be ready to step into this role with his or her election. I look forward to continuing diligently to serve you over the next fifteen months. Please know I will be working harder than ever as I complete my term to serve the people of Randolph County and to help make decisions that will provide a better future for all of us. I've called Randolph County home for more than fifty years, and it's been the honor of my lifetime to serve. As my mother used to say, Lord willing and the creek don't rise, I plan to seek and advance its well-being in any future endeavors. Thank you for your continued trust and support."
Thank you, Commissioner Haywood. God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haywood, could we ask you to serve six more days because we won't have anybody sworn in until December seventh?
Well, then I will serve until December seventh.
Okay.
Is that a friendly
By the way.
Okay, all right. Well, didn't expect that, but is there any other comments or announcements from the board? Well, but just quickly, I want to say thank you, everything happening this morning, kind of quickly and fast and everything. Thank you to the staff up here for helping me out and getting everything together, so I really appreciate that. Like Commissioner Haywood said, I couldn't have done it without you, so made it through. So I appreciate your patience to the commissioners as well. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
So is there a second?
Second.
With no discussion, we are adjourned.